Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call to order the Lafayette City Council meeting for April fifteenth, 2025. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Clark Beck, into a roll call, please.
Mayor Monget.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wong.
Here.
Counselor Barnes.
He will be present but running a few minutes late.
Counselor Friedland.
Here.
Counselor Gallegos.
Good evening.
Counselor Sampson.
She will also be present and running a few minutes late.
And Counselor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right. Thank you so much. We will begin tonight's meeting with public input. If you wish to speak during this time, please grab one of the white speaker forms. They can access through the glass doors in the back and pass it over to Clark Beck, and we can get you on the speaker list. You may also call in as well. You have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you do. And we will begin with Barbara Patton.
Good evening, council members. My name is Barbara Patton, 2389 Indian Peaks Trail in Lafayette, and I'm joined with my friend and co-board member Marion Hammond tonight. I am the current president of the Indian Peaks Master Association, and Marion is the vice president. And we're coming here tonight to ask the council for help with an issue in our neighborhood that we think is sort of important. We have, over the years, Indian Peaks was developed by a PUD, and the PUD required that the perimeter, the golf course wraps in and around Indian Peaks homes. And the PUD requires that there be a split rail fence between any homes and the golf course. We have a unique situation now, while it's been going on for thirty years, where there's a, it's called Track Day. It's along Indian Peaks Trail. If you were to drive down Indian Peaks Trail, you would think it was part of the Master Association. But the land was never deeded from McStane to either the Master Association or the sub-association, which is right there. McStane retained the ownership of the lot, and they themselves tried to build a house on it, apparently. This is, I mean, this is like twenty-five, twenty-eight years ago. And Lafayette turned them down. My understanding is because the angle of the fairway thirteen there would send the balls into the homes. And there had already been a lawsuit, I understand, I've been told, at hole eighteen, because so many of the balls were hitting people's houses. And at first, nobody adjusted the golf course, and so they had to sue the city to have hole eighteen redone. So my guess is, this is a guess, that they didn't want to deal with that situation again. So they denied the building on this lot. Well, it's been not maintained for thirty years, including the fence, which is now thirty years old. The fence is probably thirty percent falling down. And the golf course wants a fence there for the protection of both the people on our side and the golfers. In other words, they don't want, when the balls come onto this empty lot, and I call it an orphan lot, because in the McStane bankruptcy, they went bankrupt, many, many lawyers forgot to include this parcel alone. So the bankruptcy was settled and closed, and now this lot belongs to no one. It is an orphan lot. And the fence is falling down between this lot, that's owned by no one, and the golf course. And the golf course wants the fence. And our neighborhood would like the dangerous, broken-down, nailed fence removed, but A, that would be trespassing, and B, when I was growing up, if you went and took something off somebody else's property, that was called stealing. So we can't do that. And we have tried everything. We contacted our lawyer and said, what is our option? And she said, well, you could basically spend a large amount of money that could go in a black hole while you try to get the bankruptcy reopened, to see if you could acquire the land, which we're not that interested in, but we're just trying to resolve the fence problem. Or you could ask the city to put a lien on it, and then, and the city could try to acquire the piece of property that way. So another member of our board went and talked with some of the planning people, Melissa Berry, and she ended up writing a follow-up email with some information, which I'll quickly read as part of it. It says, "The fence is an element of the approved Indian Peaks filing fourteen PUD. I've attached the sheet to show you the map." It has been built in a, and this is another problem. It has been built, the fence has been built in a different place than approved on the planning, but removing it completely would require a PUD amendment, as if things aren't complicated enough. With the golf course management wanting a physical barrier so that people don't enter the fairway, especially during play, likely would make an amendment difficult to approve. So now we have another obstacle on how we're going to get this fence issue resolved. And I went ahead, and when the board member, Rick, told me all this, I said, well, did you ask them this, did you ask them that, as I do? And so I decided to make a different appointment and see if I could get some of my own questions answered. I had a new appointment with John Hoffman, the planner, and the manager of the golf course, Steve Schaman. And what I said to them was, let's move this forward another two or three years. And the fence has completely fallen down. I don't understand what the plan is. What is the plan for this orphan lot with the fence falling down, but the golf course wants the fence? We can't put the fence up. We don't have the money to put the fence up, and we don't own the property, and we don't want to trespass. So I am asking here tonight that, oh, and then John Hoffman said, I said to him, well, why can't the city acquire the property and just absorb it into the golf area? And John said, well, that's a city council decision. You'd have to go talk to them. So voila, here I am tonight, and I'm really asking you all to step in, look into the situation. Please ask the city lawyer and the planners, what could possibly be done to remedy this situation? I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know anything about condemning properties, but I would think, since this property is abandoned, there are no owners, and it has a, you know, falling-down, dangerous fence, that possibly the city could, you know, call it abandoned and take over the ownership of it and just absorb it into the golf club land there. But, you know, like I said, I'm not a lawyer. But I would really, we would really appreciate your help in looking into this and see what could possibly be done. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right. Yes. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Chelsea Pennington-Hun.
My name is Chelsea Pennington-Hun. I am here as the director of the Lafayette History Museum. You'll be seeing your presentation about the lease for a historic building later on tonight, so we figured we would come, share our annual report from 2024, which you should all have in front of you, and also just introduce ourselves as a museum to any members who may not be familiar with us. So a quick history and overview of the museum. We were founded in nineteen seventy-six, so Lafayette Historical Museum and Miners Museum. But in 2022, we changed our name to be the Lafayette History Museum, so that we can expand our focus, which allowed us to, so that our collections, exhibits, and programs can reflect more of Lafayette's history. We are located at 108 East Simpson Street, across from East Simpson Coffee Company, and open Wednesday through Saturday, so we would love for you to come and visit us sometime. We have exhibits about Lafayette's coal mining history, early lifetime, life and pioneer times, and right now, we have a temporary exhibit up about the Colorado Coal Strike of nineteen twenty-seven through twenty-eight, and the unrest during the strike, and the important role that Lafayette played in labor history in the state and in the country. Last year, in 2024, we welcomed over thirty-five hundred people to the museum and through our programs, including our school field trips, our library programming, and our walking tours, including our very popular Hanite History Walking Tour that we do in October. Our collection includes about five thousand objects, some of which are stored right here in City Hall. We are currently working on a comprehensive inventory of the collection, which will not only give us more information on each object and make sure everything is organized, we know where all is, but it will also allow us to make object records available online, and that will enable us to make the collection a lot more accessible to the community. Up until late 2023, I was the only paid staff at the museum, but for the past year and a half, we have had another part-time employee mainly focused on managing those collections. That position was largely made possible through a federal grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services and some major donors. We are a separate 501(c)(3) from the city, but we do receive funding from the city, mainly through an excise tax and storage units. And of course, we work closely with the Lafayette Public Library to both host programs and do historic research using our shared resources. And as many of you know, we also help conduct research and provide historic context to city council when asked. Some other projects working on right now include installing a new permanent exhibit featuring input from community members through our Exhibits Committee. We are adding a very large new collection from Schofield Farm to our permanent collection, and we are improving the storage condition of our artifacts. So I'm always eager to share more about what we're working on, answer any questions that you may have, so I invite you to reach out or to come visit the museum sometime.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry, Chelsea, will you be here for the portion?
We will, yeah. So I'll be here then to just, I wanted to give a quick intro.
You wanted to, okay. I mean, in the, no, that's lovely, and I'm glad you did that. I think in the future, you know, love to have you part of the presentation itself, too. That way, council can have a better.
Sure, and I think we will be introduced, yeah, just wanted to make sure that we, you know, did it properly.
Sure, sure. I was just like, no, always, always good to hear from you.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Lee Campbell-Hill.
Hi. I'll be here, too. My name is Lee Campbell-Hill. I'm the president of the board for the Lafayette History Museum. Tonight, you'll be voting on the lease between the city and the museum, and you've just heard from Chelsea, you're a director. We're here because there are a lot of new council members who don't know who we are, who don't know much about the museum, so we just wanted to be seen. Here we are. And we invite you to come visit, just like Chelsea did. When you visit, you'll see for yourself the ways we're sharing Lafayette's history. The museum is housed in a former coal miner's house that was built in eighteen ninety-five and moved from the former Gladstone Mine, which is currently the kneebone open space, to its current location. William and Hannah Lewis lived there, and after William died, Hannah supported their boys, as many women of that era did, for providing room and board to other coal miners. In nineteen seventy-six, the youngest Lewis son, Elmo, deeded the family home to us with the condition that forever be used as a history museum. With that deed, the museum began operation, and for decades, dedicated volunteers expanded and improved its archival holdings and exhibits. In 2017, the citizens of Lafayette passed a three-point-five percent excise tax. That ballot language clearly stated its purpose. Quote, "A three-point-five percent excise tax is being proposed on the rental or indoor or outdoor storage space or the sale of storage services as an equitable means to fund municipal activities related to cultural arts, historical preservation, and local history museums, including the Miners Museum, that otherwise would not be supported given the financial burden on the city's general fund." Since that tax passed, the proceeds have been divided into thirds. A third goes to the Artists Commission, a third goes to Lafayette Historic Preservation Committee, and a third goes to us. I'll point out that the Miners Museum is only one of those mentioned by name. So we were clearly in the forefront of the imagination behind that tax. That tax money, for the first time, supplied a steady source of income, and so for the first time, we're able to hire professional museum director. Chelsea's our second, and she's fabulous. She's great. We are becoming, like the city of Lafayette, increasingly professional. A lot of things that used to be done with a handshake are now being written up, like the lease. So we're figuring stuff out, you know? So we changed our name from Miners Museum to Lafayette History Museum because Lafayette has a whole lot more history than coal mining, although coal mining certainly was a big reason for it in the late eighteen hundreds through about the nineteen fifties. Currently, our one thousand square foot house, one thousand square foot house, includes the following: an office for Chelsea, which is packed, a front room used for greeting visitors, holding meetings and storing documents, a coal mining history room, a room used mostly for kitchen display, a bathroom of sun porch that is currently used by a paid employee to conduct our museum inventory, and two rooms currently displaying an exhibit about the nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-eight Colorado Coal Strike. That's a lot for a thousand feet. Additionally, in the museum's backyard, we have agricultural artifacts on display, including an old outhouse, which is a big hit with everybody, two additional buildings, an old garage, which is included in the lease agreement, and a shed, which is none. Although both outhouse buildings house artifacts, neither is climate controlled. The museum also has a locked room in the basement of this building, where I spend some time inventoring a room full of papers, which are pretty interesting. And we also have another room that Chelsea and other volunteers use to inventory the Louis Gaze map collection, which has over five hundred maps. So she's in the process of inventoring those. Additionally, the good folks at Elite Storage in Lafayette have donated three large storage spaces that house additional museum artifacts, including the just-acquired Schofield Collection of Materials. Our hope is that someday, our museum will be able to house all our artifacts under the same roof in a clean, clean, climate-controlled facility. We hope our materials will be available not only to those interested in learning more about Lafayette's history, but also to researchers. We hope our materials, right now, the main thing we need is climate-controlled space because we just don't have it, except for Elite Storage, they have that. If we could operate such facility, one that could also stage rotating historical exhibits, the current House Museum could be converted to an actual House Museum, where people could come through and see what houses looked like when this was a booming coal town. So that's, that's just something to keep in your head. I know we're living in uncertain economic times that seem to be growing more volatile by the day, and I also know that the city is beginning its long-planned conversations about future bonds and future city spaces. I'm here to introduce myself, but also I hope to plant a seed, planting a seed, to keep us in mind for consideration for space for a future Lafayette History Museum. That is in keeping with the lease agreement that you'll vote on tonight, and also with the city's comprehensive plan. So thanks in advance for your consideration, and come visit us.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have Frederick Robinson.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Frederick Robinson. I live in the South Point neighborhood, very near the beautiful Whitetail Park. I was over there today trying to fly a kite, and I noticed something anomaly from my yard, the complete absence of any weeds, including especially dandelions, from the vast expanse of that field, except for the margins along the trees, where there are tons of dandelions. I'll give this, I've got a photograph here, depict, you know, the field, the athletic field there, and then in areas where we didn't apply herbicide, just, you know, dandelions, a plunder. And I'm asking if council has, or if it would consider with our Parks Department, whether we can abstain from the use of herbicides on our, on our city parks. It's something that, you know, I don't mean to besmirch, our city neighbor, our cousin neighbor to the west, which I've always regarded as being a little more conventional, more conservative, maybe a little more uptight than Lafayette. They abstained, they eliminated the use of herbicides on the city parks five years ago. I understand the city of Boulder, the county of Boulder has done likewise. Even the city of Longmont is in the process of at least considering elimination, and that's all my point. Thank you for the, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any more speaker forms in front of me. Are there any other members in person that would like to speak? All right. I'm also not seeing any online, and I do know several folks did come with thoughts and suggestions during this period of time. The city council will usually address those at the end during council comments, or you'll be receiving an email from staff or a city councillor pretty soon. I know a lot of our city staff are here in the audience, and they're always paying attention to, to a lot of their concerns being heard, and are pretty good with, you know, follow-ups to issues brought up during public comment. All right. So with that, we will close public input and move forward with the consent agenda. We have several items, including Item A, April Frost, 2025 City Council Mini-Minutes; Item B, Securing Ordinance Number Six, Series Twenty-Twenty-Fives, Mending Article Three of Chapter Sixty-Five, Support of the Court of Ordinance; Item C, Resolution Number Twenty Two-Five, Twenty-Two, Approving the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Lafayette Downtown Development Authority; Item D, Memorandum of Understanding Regarding the Multidistrictional and Regional Approach to Bike Share in the Northwest Metro Region; Item E, Contract Independent District Engineering Services LLC, MS Four Program Support, Twenty Twenty-Five through Twenty Twenty-Six; Item F, Contract with Alfred Bench and Company, Professional Services for Design as Lafayette Sidewalk Project; Item G, Change Order Number Three, RMD, LTD, LLC, Doing Business as Elite Surface Infrastructure, Twenty Twenty-Two, Citywide Street Rehabilitation, Twenty Twenty-Five Renewal. Are there any items that council would like to pull? If not, we'll take a motion, please. Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Give a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm hoping Counselor Barnes and Counselor Sampson will be here soon, so they'll be able to join in on the voting when they come in. Okay, well, that brings us to our presentations tonight. We have one presentation. This is Item H, with the Latino Chamber of Boulder, Latino Chamber of Boulder County Partnership. And let's see, I have slideshow.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm excited to introduce a new partnership overview with the Latino Chamber of Commerce of Boulder County. I'm going to start us off, and then I'm going to pass it to Carla Coline, which is the executive president of the Latino Chamber. So I'm just going to give a quick little bit of background information, and then I'll pass it to Carla, who will talk about the Latino Chamber, the scope of services that they'll be providing to Lafayette, wrap it up with a conclusion, and then open up for any questions. So our Lafayette Economic Development and Housing Strategic Plan was approved by Council in January of 2023 and includes six economic development goals with strategies focused on business and industry, people, and place. Goal number one is one of our business-based goals that really talks about the retention and expansion of existing businesses and supporting the health, resiliency, and growth of those businesses. And within that goal, we have two specific action items, which includes the expand, to expand engagement to small, minority, and locally-owned businesses, as well as marketing and promoting resources by hosting or sponsoring events that support these small businesses. And so, as we know, Lafayette has a very vibrant Latino population and a strong network of Latino-owned businesses that contribute to the city's cultural and economic vitality. And so, to effectively support these entrepreneurships, we are partnering with the Latino Chamber that already has a lot of established relationships and presence here in Lafayette to be able to support these Latino-owned businesses and provide these services. So with that, I am going to pass it over to Fabla, who will take it from here.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Apologize in advance for a cough attack that I might get. My allergies decided to show up as a weird cough, consistent cough, starting three days ago, and it won't go away, but thank you so much.
Tell me about it.
Oh, I know. So the Latino Chamber has had the opportunity to connect with some of you at different capacities. Some of you know our families, some of you know the work that we do, but I want to talk about this partnership today, and as Isabella said, this is kind of like a new partnership, but we've been doing the, the work in the community for a long time. I'm a Lafayette-y by heart, and I left Lafayette, but Lafayette never left my heart, and the work that I do here in the community. The Latino Chamber of Commerce focuses on promoting economic development. We grow and make it sustainable for our members to enable access to those businesses, opportunities that are usually not easy to access for underserved communities. We work a lot on developmental resources through. We work a lot on developmental resources through strategic initiatives, and we are based in Longmont, but we serve Boulder County and the surrounding areas. Our vision is to build strength and promote the interest of Latino businesses, and our mission is to maximize the Latino economic development and job creation through advocacy and programs that generate success and value. We don't deny services to those that don't identify as Latinos and those outside the geographic area of Boulder County, and also, we don't deny services to those that are not members of the Latino Chamber. We don't force anyone to become a member of the Chamber. If they cannot afford, or they're not willing to be a member just yet, we provide their services and resources anyways without asking them to be a member. Our goals are to promote awareness and preservation of the Latino heritage, bridge the gap between Latino and all other businesses. We want to make sure that we work in collaboration with other organizations, and we also promote environmental, economic, social, and educational needs for the Latino community. We promote wealth creation for the Latino community, and promote and influence representation in major issues of public policy, and we also partner with other organizations to advance our interest, and these organizations are within the county of Boulder and the surrounding areas as well. And I just want to share a little bit of data from last year with all of you. Five percent of our membership is based in Lafayette. Last year, we supported twenty-four Lafayette businesses with technical assistance or resources connection. Language is not the only barrier that the Latino businesses encounter within their development, so we like to provide information and resources that are covering all their needs. In twenty twenty-four, we participated in seven different partner meetings and community events. As you can see in this picture, we are Romero's K-9 with that networking event, but also showcasing women-owned businesses within this event. The scope of services that we are offering to City of Lafayette and our partnership is records and data management. It's really hard for chambers of commerce and people that support economic development to find data about how the businesses, especially minority-owned businesses, are doing and how we help them grow. So we are working with all of our businesses, asking them about their data, and the information that we collect at the end, we will submit in a report. We are also committing to event coordination, at least two networking events, but we, like I said before, we had seven opportunities of engagement with the Lafayette community last year, so we anticipate that to be the minimum. Also, the collaborative effort, we work very closely with the Northwest Chamber Alliance, which the Lafayette Chamber of Commerce is part of, and also Partners for a Clean Environment to offer sustainable options for small businesses. And we are also offering, as of last week, consulting services for small businesses. We are going to be sharing space, and we are very grateful for Sister Carmen, that are letting us be at their facilities, once a month, to offer consulting services, technical assistance, and resource navigation for small businesses in Lafayette. That's kind of like the big scope of the work that we are doing with the city.
Amazing.
Just really quick, the Latino Chamber of Commerce remains committed to fostering community development and supporting local businesses, will continue to seek opportunities of collaboration, not only with the City of Lafayette, obviously, but with other partners that can contribute to the Lafayette businesses. We are going to focus on data collection, event coordination, and partnership and consulting services, and the next steps for us will be to continue the work of supporting all businesses, all small businesses in Lafayette, and emphasizing on the Latino businesses. And I'm here if you guys have any questions.
Of course, yeah. Thank you so much for that presentation.
Yeah.
And for joining us. Questions from Council.
Keltor Tapia Vega. Yes. First and foremost, hello, Carla. Thank you for being here. It's amazing to have the Latino Chamber here. It's an organization that I love so much, and I'm so happy that they're collaborating with the City of Lafayette. It's actually Lafayette, there's a cool history with the City of Lafayette, because a couple, many of the founding members of the Latino Chamber are still Lafayette residents, and they still come to a lot of board meetings, they're still kind of around, so it's really cool that you're here. And you said something interesting, that is something that I know for fact, it's the Latino Chamber only by name. You guys really help anyone and everyone who comes to you, and really, like, you keep the Latino Chamber name because it's just there, but you guys really are like the chamber for anyone and everyone. I love it. I have a few questions, though. For the scope of work, you talked about some networking events. I know you guys do, like, Hora Sociales, and if anyone doesn't know what that is, they do a monthly networking event where they bring everyone in the community together at a local restaurant, or like, some place that is part of a member, that is in their memberships. So it sounds like there's going to be two networking events in the City of Lafayette. Are those along the lines of Hora Sociales, or is it something different?
So we have multiple options for those. We have multiple networking opportunities. The Hora Sociales are kind of like business after-hours, but we also host what we call Cafecito and Platica, which is coffee time, a very casual conversation with small business owners, where we present a para, on a specific topic during that time. That's another opportunity. And we also started last year our Empower Women Group. We receive women, it doesn't matter if they're not business owners, and doesn't matter if they don't identify as Latinas, but we, every other month, we host a either professional or personal development topic for women in the community that would like to be part of it. And within the Empower Women Group, we also have the opportunity for a mentor matching program, so we partner entrepreneurs or professionals in the community that identify as women with a mentor that could help them advance in their career. So we have, other than Hora Sociales, we have other options for us to be part of the community as well.
Amazing. Another question, what does technical assistance look like? Because I know you guys have, you have a plethora of resources. I mean, if I come to you as a business, I know there's a million different things you can do for me, but what does that look like for like a Lafayette business? Where are you really getting asked, for the most part?
Yeah, so, as I was saying, language is not the only barrier for the Latino community and for other communities, and something that we do is, when they come to us, we fill out an intake form, and based on that, we learn what are the needs, what are the resources they're looking for, and we partner them with those resources that we feel are going to be more willing to help them, or they're going to be able to thrive within the needs that they have. But it could go from not knowing how to register their business with the Secretary of State, all the way to applying for a loan, you know, access to capital. So it depends on the needs of the business. We make sure that we ask them those questions and that we connect with them, so we learn what are the needs. We are, and I always give this example, but I think it's one of the main topics that we get at the Chamber, access to capital. If a business that just opened six months ago is looking for access to capital, we're not going to send them to a bank for a loan, because we know they're not going to qualify. So based on the information they give us, we're going to send them to a nonprofit that does microloans, or to a CDFI. It depends, we curate the resources that we offer to business to make sure that they are going to be more likely to succeed.
Amazing. Two more questions if I can, Mayor. One of them is quick, and I don't know if you'd know the answer to the question. Do you know what the crossover is with your membership and then the Lafayette Chamber? Do you know how many businesses are part of both chambers?
That's a great question. I don't know the exact answer, but I also know that because of language barrier, it's very difficult for some of our members to become part of the Lafayette Chamber. I know there, we've been working together with the Lafayette Chamber on hosting an event that we did for sustainability here a couple, when I say a couple months ago, maybe like a month and a half ago, and we saw some businesses that showed up and didn't know about either or Chamber, either of the chambers, but we want to make sure that we work closely with them and help them bridge that barrier. If they don't offer a certain service or workshop in Spanish, we'll be more than happy to support them that way.
Amazing. Last question. I think all of us sitting behind these microphone, so I just want to assume we're doing like the absolute best for everyone in the city, and for new businesses, and we're a city that's definitely loves small business, but we have the expert of minority businesses in this county sitting here, so I'm going to be a little bit selfish. What are they saying to you? So when a small business comes, not just to this city, but to this county, what are they saying? What do they need? What can we do better to help these businesses get off the ground? Because I know how hard it is. I used to own a business, and I know how impossible it can really feel. So what are they saying to you? What are you hearing?
Great question. So going back a little bit on what you mentioned earlier, we started, and I said "we" because I started as a volunteer with the Chamber, but we started noticing the needs of the, in the community from, you know, Boulder County and the surrounding areas, when we did the first vaccine clinic here in Lafayette. And all those businesses that, business owners that were waiting in their car for their vaccine, were telling us all the needs, and that's when we decided to not deny services to those that don't identify as Latinos, or those that are outside the geographic area of Boulder County. And we've had, since then, members of the community that don't identify as Latinos, that are maybe from the Asian community, or the African-American community, coming to us because they know we understand that we need to take them step by step. That's a whole different thing, that maybe, you know, put us aside from other chambers. We do a lot of the technical assistance, as I was saying, like, we take them step by step. We make sure that they have access to that, but also, the big thing is access to capital. That topic has always been a big thing for our members, and we want to make sure that, you know, we guide them through the process. Some of them are not ready for a loan, and we don't want to put them in debt if they don't need to, but that's something that we are very careful with. We want to make sure that we curate those resources, and access to capital and assistance on knowing and navigating licenses and permits and the regulations are, you know, big topics for our businesses.
Amazing. Thank you. I just hope they one day bring La Feria del Tamales to Lafayette, and if you don't know what that is. It's a, it's a fair, it's a giant, they bring thousands of people, and they've done it in Longmont, I think, two or three years, something like that?
Yeah, this is going to be our third year.
And it's tamales from all over the region, and all they do is just showcase all the tamales that they can, it's amazing, and I would love if you could bring it to Lafayette.
Who doesn't love tamales?
Thank you.
Awesome. No, thank you for those questions. Yeah, I really am excited to see this partnership grow. I also have a, my day job, you know, serves as a teacher at Angi by Middle School, and there's a lot of clubs starting to form now that used to exist when we were younger, now went away, but are coming back. Latino boys, Latin girls are coming back, and so I'm wondering, you know, if there could be also some partnership with the youth in the community, not necessarily like, obviously they don't have their own businesses, but learning from a young age, you know, those techniques, I think, could be super beneficial. So maybe I can be in touch with, I'll probably reach out to you directly.
Definitely.
Over the next week or so, to talk about some, maybe potential partnerships there.
Definitely. We have a lot of very close conversations, and even former board members of the Latino Chamber are teachers and professors that would like to bring their students to volunteer with the Chamber, and we are more than happy to take them. These kids have joined us for like festivals like the Tamales Festival and other events that we have, and they learn firsthand what it is to connect with the community and volunteer for organizations that are doing a good impact in their own community. So happy to talk about that.
Any other questions from Council? Councillor Freeman?
I appreciate all the comments you've made about working with the Lafayette Chamber. I feel like that, it sounds like it already has been a really mutually beneficial relationship, so I just appreciate you doing that. I'm curious, too, have you had any conversations with the new farmers market that's coming to Lafayette? I wonder if that's a good opportunity for, again, mutually beneficial collaborations?
No, with the new market, we encourage always our businesses to apply for, you know, having a spot, especially, and we always talk about Lafayette in the Chamber, because we want more Latino businesses to have the opportunity to join the Peach Festival, for example. We want to make sure that it's, they're giving opportunities to new businesses as well, so that's something that we always, during our Cafecitos, as I was mentioning earlier, we have a topic that is presented, so if the farmers market wants to come and present on, you know, the process of applying for a spot at the market, we'll be more than happy to host them. And also, something that we do very specific for our partners, is that we have a super simple Google form that they can fill out, where we promote within our communication channels. It's not only the traditional social media platforms and newsletter, we also have private WhatsApp groups with business owners, where they receive the information in a text message, which a lot of the times is easier than checking a thousand emails that they get a day, and then they just click a link and they can learn more about whatever resource is out there. So we'll be more than happy to talk to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, lovely, that's all from us.
Okay, perfect.
Once again, appreciate you coming out tonight, and you know, we'll be in touch soon.
Sounds good. Thank you for having me.
Of course, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Awesome. Well, that brings us to regular business for tonight. We have Item I. This is first reading, first reading of Ordinance Number Eight, Series Twenty Twenty-Five, Providing for Additional Appropriations During Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five for Unanticipated Twenty Twenty-Five Revenues and Expenditures acquired by the City of Lafayette. We have our interim CFO here, Morgan Walton, to get us started.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll walk us through the budget carryforward and supplemental for our first one in twenty twenty-five. We have our agenda on the screen, but we're going to start first just with some common definitions. I'm sure these are all familiar to you, but a little pressure is always helpful. So first, we have budget carryforwards. These are done early in the fiscal year. These are for expenditures only. These are for unused one-time budget for projects and initiatives that were in progress at the end of twenty twenty-four, and these are encumbered funds, meaning they are attached with a purchase order or a contract, and this isn't any carryforward for any unused base or ongoing budget. So if there were salary savings in a certain department in twenty twenty-four, those are not eligible to be brought over into twenty twenty-five. Budget supplementals, these are done throughout the fiscal year. They can include revenues and expenditures. So revenues, they're generally new revenue sources, often associated with an expenditure, for example, a grant, and then expenditures are new or reallocated expenditures. We have one-time, which are non-recurring, and then ongoing, which are recurring. We really try to avoid doing the ongoing in the supplemental, those are really for the annual budget process. So on this slide, on the left-hand side, you're able to see the types of different budget amendments included in our pitch tonight. We have a hundred, we have three thirty-six million proposed going forward. By type, there's approximately ninety-one percent, that's either the carryforward and accompan, or encumbrance, these are the twenty twenty-four amounts, moving into twenty twenty-five, and only nine percent are new supplemental requests. This is pretty typical of the first budget amendment of the year. Really, the only fluctuation we see is kind of the timing of the different capital projects ongoing in public works. You can also see, on the right-hand side, we have these items by different fund. The largest fund here is the Water Fund at thirty-four percent, and then the second largest is that Capital Projects Fund. So we have a summary of the budget amendments on the slide. As we mentioned earlier, the carryforward encumbrances are really the bulk of this presentation tonight. They account for approximately ninety-one percent, which you can see in those first two columns. Again, that row for capital is really going to be our heaviest item. Those are the items that we're bringing forward with those capital projects. We also have supplementals listed on here, that those are new requests. They equal two-point-eight million dollars, but they are offset by one-point-five million dollars in revenue. So again, there's that total, that thirty-six-point-one million dollars. So we're going to run through a few notable carryforwards. First, we have in the General Fund, the aerial fire apparatus. You all, I'm sure, are quite familiar with this. We brought it forward in twenty twenty-three, really due to the long delivery times. We're expecting it to be delivered in twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. Also familiar to Council is the Water Bill Assistance Program. This is in the General Fund, so with the pilot program of the Water Bill Assistance in twenty twenty-four, about thirty-two thousand is remaining to carry forward into the twenty twenty-five season, again, to have that additional changes to the program as this last year. Also notable in the Capital Project Funds is a sidewalk missing links grant project. So the city received four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from CDOT as a grant, with a match from the City of Lafayette of fifty thousand. This is to address missing sidewalk sections. A contract for design of these new sections was approved on consent tonight, and approximately two-hundred-thousand of this five-hundred-thousand dollars is going directly to design, as these are areas where there is no existing sidewalk. So it's being designed and then implemented, and then with this grant, the city was able to select six missing sidewalk sections, which is approximately point-seven-five miles. Next, in the Grant Fund, we have ARPA, or American Rescue Plan Act, funding. That's two-point-seven million dollars, and that was brought forward to Council and approved to fund a portion of the Starkey Building renovation, as well as that fiber-optic backbone for the infrastructure to connect those multiple city facilities. Lastly, on this slide, we have the Water Fund's New Water Treatment Plant, final design. That's for one-point-three million dollars. That is moving forward in conjunction with the siting study for the location of the new water treatment plant. Moving on to supplementals, one of the items we have on here is an urban interface fire engine. So after a thorough review of the options, the Fire Department has a brushed truck that is set for retirement, and it is scheduled to be placed with an urban interface fire engine. And the reason that this decision was made is to improve capability based on responses to wind-driven grass fires and structure interfaces. This new vehicle would provide a four-wheel-drive option, which is not- is not currently available on the current truck, and it really allows for more ease of getting to locations and incidences with the extreme winter weather. This funding for this vehicle will be sourced from a couple of different places. It will be sourced from the fleet fund. It will also be sourced from restricted funding balances in the general fund, from the rural fire and the service expansion fee. If these amendments go forward and are approved by council tonight, staff will be back on the May 6 meeting, asking for council's approval to move forward with this purchase. In the capital projects fund, we have mobile vehicle barriers. So these barriers provide protection for vehicle crashes as the city hosts and assists larger community events. So think art night out, farmer's market, for example. And unfortunately, we've seen a recent history of these type of events of events become safety targets. So really the city is continuing its transition to professionalize our event planning. And this is a key function of that. So previous examples of that, of that have been hiring a dedicated part-time staff member to assist with event management and as well as eliminating public work staff from hanging banners on public road or really setting up any events that aren't really related to public works. In the past, the city has used as barriers dump trucks. These, to secure these spaces, these have been deployed by the same folks over at Public Works who are responding to water incidences, are having to plow the snow and really are just coming back after potentially a long day, after these events, events are over later in the night to move these vehicles. Also not what the vehicles were designed for. These barriers are safer, easier to deploy and less intrusive, both physically and visually, and they are going to provide an easy to install and safe environment for these events. They can also be used by the city and any partner organizations during events that would require any road closures. Lastly, on this item, we have a waste management fund item. Now, this was brought forward at the last year-end supplemental for the 2024 budget. This was to fix the forecasting that was based on numbers that did not include all of the HOA units who are in the three cart program. We fixed it for the 2024 budget. Unfortunately, the 2025 budget had already been passed when we had looked at this correction. So we're looking to correct it in the 2026 or the 2025 budget and then the 2026 budget and ensure that that's already part of the annual process. So lastly, we have a net impact by fund. The, again, net expenditure requests are 36.1 million. The revenue associated with these requests is approximately 1.5 million, leading to a total impact of approximately 34.6 million. And you can see the largest funds that are impacted off to the right. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions for the council? Council Samson?
I just have a question on the service expansion fee. Can you talk a little bit more about that? It looks like it's going to help with the supplemental fire engine.
Sure, absolutely. I can talk about that. It is related to when we have new development. It's for the expansion of development continuing to be built out and it's paid on each application. So really why it's being used for this particular engine is because we've seen a 30% increase in our development since the last truck was purchased and we've really kind of tried to slate it out evenly to match it up that way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for that presentation.
Of course.
And then we do have a motion if someone feels ready.
I move to approve on first reading ordinance number eight, series 2025, providing for additional appropriations during fiscal year 2025 for unanticipated 2025 revenues and expenditures required of the city of Lafayette, Colorado, specifically carry forwards of 2024 expenditures, appropriation of certain 2024 capital cost project items, and modification of current 2025 budget line items.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That brings us to item J. These are items pertaining to the Lafayette History Museum and city-owned property located at 108 East Simpson Street, including first reading, first reading of ordinance number seven, series 2025, authorizing a lease agreement between the city of Lafayette and the Lafayette History Museum for the property located at 108 East Simpson Street and an MOU between the Lafayette History Museum and the city of Lafayette regarding the provision of historical research, programming, and services for the Lafayette community. We have our deputy city mayor here to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're here this evening to talk about an ordinance and lease agreement with the Lafayette History Museum and a memorandum of understanding regarding our partnership with the museum and the city. I'm going to talk a little bit about background on this item and then share some details of the lease agreement, the MOU, next steps, and then we have motion language for both items. So some of you may recall that in 2024, the city reviewed our city-owned properties that are leased to outside entities. We have several buildings that we lease either to partners or other organizations in some fashion. And in reviewing these leases, we found that some of them were outdated and inconsistent. They had been around for years and years and we had had different levels of kind of formality around those agreements. And in other cases, that some of the agreements were either expired, hadn't been renewed, or never had any kind of lease in place. So we, over the course of the last year, have taken a close look at these leases and revised the lease agreements, updated them or created them. And we've been really aiming to reflect current best practices around leases and legal standards and also to establish kind of a baseline for our maintenance and our improvements and the partnerships that we have with the organizations that occupy them. So here's a, here's a map of the leases that we have taken a look at. As you're aware, we have a lease with Sister Carmen and this occupies their thrift store space. We also have a, or we had a lease in place for the Ewing Farm and that building after inspection throughout this process was deemed uninhabitable. So we no longer have that building occupied. And then we also have the WOW Museum. We established a new lease, the WOW Museum, last summer. And then we have the Arapaho Center Theater, which we are continuing to lease on kind of a, just on intermittent basis for use of that space. The History Museum is what we're here to talk about tonight and that is the building that is located on East Simpson Street. So as you heard a little bit tonight from both Chelsea and Lee about the, the background on the museum, it's been occupied by Lafayette History Museum since 1976. Through that time, it's been known as the Lafayette Miners Museum and the Lafayette Historical Society was the 501, is the 501(c)(3). Now they are called the Lafayette History Museum. The city purchased the building a few years later and the nonprofit, the Lafayette History Museum, has continued to operate the museum and provide services to the community. You, Chelsea gave some highlights of their 2024 annual report, but they welcomed about 3,400 visitors and over 400 schoolchildren last year. And so they do serve as a valuable partner here at the city. We don't have any historians on staff and so we're really not able to conduct, you know, kind of historical research and store any kind of historical collection other than records. So we kind of rely on the History Museum to be our partner in researching and sharing local history with the community and visitors alike. So we have entered into a lease agreement for East Simpson Street for the museum. We found that no lease has ever existed between these parties for the property. So we've kind of had informal operating arrangement with them and it really, I think, has gone well over the years. We have a good relationship, the organization, and again, they have partnered with us closely on a lot of items. But all parties agreed that having a formal lease in place would create kind of security and also just a more formal maintenance operations agreement. You know, it's a very old building and so it does need some, you know, TLC now and then. So this is a property that we have maintained over the course of their occupation in the building and the museum has operated the programming and the services. Our annual investment in maintenance for this facility is about $10,000. So that includes the building maintenance, kind of the ongoing preventive maintenance, the grounds, and we pay for some of the utilities as well, the electric, water, and, you know, kind of make improvements on an as-needed basis. For example, we're, we're replacing the HVAC system, I think this year and as a few years ago, we did the roofing. So we kind of just put it into our maintenance cycle as we do with all of our other buildings. And when the need arises and it becomes in need of replacement, then we work to prioritize it with our other facilities. So the proposed lease for the property was for a full-service lease, a gross lease. And so ordinance number seven, series 2025 establishes a full-service lease with the Lafayette History Museum. The terms include a 20-year lease with a 10-year extension. It is a no-cost lease. The city maintains its all repairs except to any contents, exhibits, possessions of the museum. We insure the building and the Lafayette Historist, History Museum as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit maintains liability insurance and coverage of their contents and exhibits as they, as they desire. We also have an MOU that we are putting together and this is really more around the kind of the operations. And as Chelsea mentioned, we do appropriate funds to the museum. So we have general fund appropriation that has happened for, for many years and then funding from the storage tax as well. That's in the budget for 2025 and we're, we're working on the funding agreement for that now as well. And the city and the museum have kind of an informal operating programming relationship at this point. So the MOU gives a little bit more specific guidance and agreement around programming and operations and it focuses on things like communication. So communications between the two party, parties, but also kind of what we support of one another in terms of communicating, promoting programs, promoting events at city facilities. So it references the lease agreements and what expectations are there. Discussion, or kind of agreements and, and collaboration around programs, services, historic representation and content. And, you know, we talked a lot about the Lafayette History Museum's values and the city's values around kind of cultural competency and historic representation and what we agree to kind of focus on and pay attention. So that's a point of intentional collaboration for us. And then funding and grant assistance, both in the fact that the city provides some funding, has in the past. Of course, it's always subject to annual appropriations, but also that we will support them if they want to apply for grants for their programs and services or for the building if appropriate. So the terms are really a non-biding legal agreement that are intended to support our working relationship together and we plan to review it every two years and then if and when the lease up for renewal. And it may be terminated if the city no longer provides operating funds to the museum. So next steps, if you approve ordinance number seven, series 2025, it'll come back on second reading, May 6. We will continue to have our regular check-in meetings between the city and the museum and the building mates will continue as it has in the past through the agreement. So happy to take questions. And as you know, Chelsea Pennington-Hahn is here and Lee Campbell-Hale as well, the director and the chair of the museum board. And any of us are happy to answer questions and we have motion language require both a motion for approval of the ordinance and approving that MOU between the Lafayette History Museum and the city.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay. Yeah, let's turn it over to council for questions. Council Samson?
Tell me more about a letter of support because I'm used to when somebody goes for a grant, then they come and they ask specifically for a letter of support from that council. In other words, I have a little concern with this council already saying we're going to support, support that we know nothing about. And this is a 20, 30-year agreement.
Yeah, that's a good question. So the, the MOU doesn't guarantee any letter of support or formal support. And we've actually, again, because we've had kind of this informal agreement, we were, our practice has been that if there's a grant that they want to go after specifically if it has anything to do with the facility or the building, that we have talked about it and determined if that's going to have an impact on our maintenance, our ongoing maintenance. So we would still have them come for a formal letter of support if they needed that for an application.
And my second question is about the length of the lease agreement. Just because we know that, all right, I'm going back to affordable housing. If this was a 30,000, a 30-year affordable housing, you'd be refinancing it usually at 20 years. So I guess I'm wondering, we're dealing with a historic piece of property. Is there any need to do anything that would be a large renovation to it? Or I think of like a foundational renovation or I've heard that the, the back garage storage area is really not very sturdy. Is there any reason that we might have to do something different in terms of this?
You know, it is possible. It's a very old building. We have done an assessment of the building and there are needs and, you know, we would have to prioritize them with all of our other kind of facility needs. So we don't have anything other than replacing the door to the back garage this, this summer that we're planning to complete in the next five years. But as we do our capital planning, we would look for that. We have, I don't know, Mary, if you want to talk about the lease. I mean, we, we have it structured so that if for any reason we have to do some type of, you know, if, if the floor gives out or something, we have to do some type of major, you know, renovation, we would provide notification to the museum that it, you know, couldn't be occupied and give them, I think, 180 or...
Yeah, there's an opportunity for both parties to terminate the lease if that happens.
Yeah.
And just to add on to that, this building would be maintained under the same priority and standards as every city facility. The city goes through that annual process of looking at facilities and the city has no obligation to fund any particular facility improvements. And so it's entirely up to our capital planning process and council's budgeting process each year, how we fund and plan any improvements to buildings. So, but we accounted for all of that in the lease.
Is that what you meant by like every two years you're, we're reviewing it?
So the MOU is the, is the document that we'll be reviewing every two years. And then the lease is actually for 20 years with a 10-year extension. So it's much longer recognizing we intend to have, you know, the Lafayette History Museum as a long-term partner in this process. But as, you know, our city attorney said, we've built in if something would happen to the building or if we anticipated a major renovation that we would have to do, and then we would work with the museum to time that so that they could, you know, either temporarily, you know, relocate or, you know, be, change their operations to accommodate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you. Other questions from council? Council Freedom?
I'm, I'm trying to dive into the detail of the lease a little bit, but I'm going to ask my question just so I can really understand. So theoretically, let's say somebody's in the backyard and they fall over one of the pieces of ag equipment and hurt themselves. Who's, we're the property owner. They're operating it. They're the tenant. Who's on the hook?
I'm going to let the, me. But that would definitely be a question for me. I'm sorry. Give your scenario again. I was trying to pull the lease also. Go ahead.
Let's say somebody's in the backyard walking, looking at the, the old pieces of ag equipment and they trip over one and hurt themselves.
Gotcha. So that would fall, that would most likely fall under the Lafayette History Museum's general liability insurance. And so that would be the first place where any claims along those lines would go. Because if it's related to their operation of the site, they're required to have general liability insurance covering bodily injury and property damage.
If somebody hurts themselves at the shed because we didn't maintain it appropriately, that's on us?
It could be. It could depend. It could depend.
Okay. But we feel like the agreement, just like all of our other lease agreements, are appropriately in terms of coverage for the city.
Correct. So where you have a landlord-tenant situation like this, we have required that to be fully insured on, in all those areas that we can require. The city does through its liability insurer, carry property insurance that covers all city property. So the structure itself, but, but in terms of the museum's operations, anything related to its operations will come under its policies.
Tenant operations.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay. Other questions? Councilor Marks?
Thank you. Just had a question about the, we've had a long history of history of Lafayette. Does this help provide for a greater representation of the history? And this is probably a question for you.
Yeah, the museum can answer.
Does it help us establish a better understanding of where the city represents what has happened historically? Because we've, you know, we've heard lots of stories of what has happened and is documentable and what's not documentable. Does this help with that? If we have a, I know we're going to, this doesn't specifically state any kind of working relationship with what the city says about its history, but does it help in any way?
I mean, I will share in conversations, you know, with Director Heisel and with the museum. And I think our goal is that this creates and supports the collaborative agreement to work through those conversations. And so, you know, I think it's a commitment to work together. And we've already had examples, I think, where issues have come up and we've brought the information together and had the museum board kind of, who have experience in historical research, and Chelsea, look through some of that information, help provide some context and a different viewpoint. So I think it would be, it creates kind of a collaborative process or it supports that collaborative process to sustain that commitment and to kind of uplift that commitment. Do you want to add something, Chelsea?
Sure. I mean, yeah, I think the, yeah, that's a big part of the MOU is talking about that, I'm not going to remember the exact wording off the top of my head, but agreeing with the city's values and, you know, representing that in what we do. And part of the, you know, the funding agreement as well is that each year coming together to kind of agree on the goals for that and how we would use that and making sure that, you know, what we're working on is in alignment with the city's priorities. And then certainly us, you know, on our own as well, we just had a new strategic plan at the, 2023 was the first year of that and that goal generally of representation, you know, combined with that changing of our name, just allowing us to make sure that the museum tells certainly that coal mining history of the town, but can expand beyond that as well as a priority of ours, just as an organization.
No, you got it. So thank you very much. And wait, wait, wait.
Sorry.
I don't know, if you could help me understand, like, I know this provides greater context for us to maintain a history of this area, the whole, you know, Lafayette, the city, the place. And we don't have that capacity in the library per se, but when I hear the word or when I think of the word archives, is that, is there a different definition of, is that, that's a different thing versus a historic record of the city? Or are they, does the library have an archives? And if so, is that different from?
They're all.
So the library does have an archive. We have a very particular collection, so maps, oral histories, historic photographs, things that we have the capacity to store and archive, very different from the collection of the museum, which is objects.
3D objects and, and there's some, yeah, we have archived as well, archival material typically refers to, yeah, papers, maps, books, that sort of thing. And so that's an ongoing, you know, conversation we're having and figuring out, making sure we're not reinventing the wheel between us and the library and that.
What the historical society has that we don't is the ability to put context around the history. So we have the collection, but their ability to interpret it is something that we don't have within our team.
Create programs and displays to kind of reflect that to the community.
The historian in me is one of the.
Do you mind, just for the mic and for the folks watching at home? Yeah, thanks, Lee.
Sorry. Want to talk? You're asking great questions. History is complicated. And we're working on it. So we're trying to hear and include as many voices as we can. And that involves having as many conversations with as many people in the community as we can and trying to expand that as much as we can. Sources are always going to favor people with money and resources. Even the very beginning of the House Museum to the very first artifacts that went in there. And we're trying to expand that. And that's why we really would like a clean, climate-controlled place so that we can take in more materials from more people who maybe didn't donate their stuff in the 70s and 80s. Does that make sense? So that we can expand the group of people who want to donate materials to us and we can take those and be good stewards of those materials that we haven't been able to do in the past.
Thank you. That makes wonderful sense. And I'm glad that that statement and this description has been recorded. And if you will allow me for just one time, I'm just going to geek out for a second here. I asked this and it was way too soon when I asked this, it was back when I first got elected. Our GIS system got destroyed in a ransomware attack and it's been rebuilt. I go that far back. And at the time, I asked if we were going to include pre, the pre-human history, like geological history, and once we have more capacity with our GIS system, and that was way too soon for that question. But so that we can go even further backwards in what is, because this used to be an agrarian area. Why? I am, you know, maybe there's something about it that, and our, the history with oil, fossil fuel recovery is related to the geology of this space.
Sure.
So is that something that we've ever thought about?
We're working on it.
You're working on that?
Yeah, yeah. So we're, we have a new exhibit committee and we're trying to expand the current coal mining room to be coal mining and agriculture and talk about the first people who came here and why they came here and how those two were intertwined all along. And we're trying to go back, I have a friend, I'm taking a little sidestep here. I have a friend here who worked, I was a professor in Oklahoma for a couple of years. And there's a whole bunch of interesting GPS activity going on, having to do with mapping towns to find where the activity was. And a lot of it depends on who we get to join our board and what their interests are because we're all volunteers. But we are interested in that because a lot of the things that we thought we knew are wrong. And so we're investigate, like for instance, when I started joining the board a million years ago, I thought that most of the people who came here with the Homestead Act, I'm in our city basement occasionally, in our room, looking at records. Every single deed I looked at started with the railroad. The railroad. I didn't know that. That changes the entire history of the town. Doesn't it?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And for my fellow councils, the reason I ask your counselor, people who are here, is that unless we know our history, we are, we might make mistakes in the future. And as with a shift in climate, with the development, the land use and the way we use our land, it may not be in conjunction with what we've seen historically. So as we look forward and design policy for the future, it might be good to recognize what's happened.
We're working on it.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. And it will inform us forward as long as we don't build on things that are going to happen.
That's our goal. We're working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are great questions. I was going to ask similar ones. Yeah, I think this conversation is large. Did you have something you wanted to add? No, I think it's a super large, like, it's a wide conversation because we, like, what we're talking about tonight, you know, is the lease and the MOU. And so it's, there's a lot going into tonight's conversation. All the great points that Counselor Sampson brought up about like, what is the city's relationship with the museum itself and if they are looking to expand, have more storage space as they've been asking for for years. And to make the museum more centerpiece in the city where folks are attracted to come in and visit and then learn. And then once they're in those doors, they're much more likely to want to get involved in the city, join boards and commissions, volunteer their time here and maybe, you know, run for council one day. And so like, I think it's important for us, like, in these conversations to continue to kind of understand how are the operations of it all is going to work. That's a huge focus of mine. I think that should be a huge, you know, we'll have a retreat next year, you know, some members of council, but like, even this year, you know, we can start talking about the operations and the partnership with the library, with the museum, with the, with the members of the community, with the city, how that all works, you know, having a streamlined process, that would be, that would be so ideal. And so that ties into like all the stuff that Counselor Barnes was bringing up is, how do we, you know, at the end of the day, we're never really going to know which, what actually happened in history, but we can gather primary and secondary sources. We can, you know, learn as much as we can to give our best account of it. And so we want to make sure at the end of the day, you know, we're going to be faced with a lot of tough decisions up here. And I don't want to continue the cycle that we've been facing over the last five years really about, you know, what do we do? Would folks want to change names of things or create plaques or remove plaques or build statues or tear down statues? We need justification to make those decisions. And I think, you know, staff has already been working really, really hard. And so I hope like with tonight's vote, you know, this is like, we can solidify that relationship with the folks at the museum. And then from here on out, start figuring out procedural ways, you know, operationally, how we're going to work together with all the different kind of silos of history collectors that are going around in the city. And then we're combining those into one, you know, source for when council has to make those tough decisions. And so, and of course, shout out to our friends at the Historical Museums, the Lafayette Museum, because we've been having these conversations for like, like, a year and a half now. And so I'm glad to see this is finally really moving with tonight. And, you know, I think council is in agreement that, you know, we want to continue to see this relationship going. With that, we will take a motion when someone feels ready.
I move to approve ordinance number seven, series 25, on first reading authorizing a lease agreement with the Lafayette History Museum for the property located at 108 East Simpson Street.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
There are two motions, right?
Yeah. So we do have a motion and a second on the first. Motion there for the lease agreement. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
None opposed, that passes unanimously. And the next?
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Lafayette History Museum and the City of Lafayette regarding the provision of historical research, programming and services to the Lafayette community and authorize the mayor to sign the MOU on behalf of the city.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that also passes unanimously. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And, um, thank you so much. Did you have another one? Okay. All right. Well, that wraps up regular business for tonight, which will bring us to staff reports, starting with the city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything to report this evening.
Awesome. On to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So a couple of things to update tonight. Probably the most important one, because it occurred last minute, is a change in venue for the Hard to Recycle event that is occurring on Saturday. Due to a conflict at the Flat Irons Church, staff had to pit just yesterday to find a new location for this really popular event. So we have moved it to the Old King Super location off baseline and Highway 287 parking lot. As a reminder, the event is from 8:00 to 12:00. Registration is required. We have notified everyone that is registered, I think over 380 people, and there are very limited spots left if folks want to register for that as well. And we are hoping that the snow stays very light on Friday, so this event can continue. It's always wild in April for Earth Month. And also, I'm very excited to announce that our annual art on the sculpture installations will be next week, weather permitting, April 21st through the 24th. A special note, we're really excited that the dragon sculpture, coincidentally called Off to Work, which we might look like that some mornings, is going to actually be placed on the city-owned location right in front of Morrell's Printing, sort of to activate that space. So they will be installing that on Wednesday, April 23rd, in the afternoon, and they'll be using a crane to lift it. So really, congratulations to Arts and Cultural Resources team for getting that very popular sculpture, a very large one. Finally, kind of related to our capital bond exploration, our second community meeting will be held Wednesday, April 30th, 6:00 p.m. here at city council. We had a really robust discussion earlier this month on it related to the projects. The second discussion is going to be really centered around the financing and economic context. Also, we have opened our Lafayette Listen survey. That's open until May 16th. And then our community registered voters also got a second reminder for that statistically valid survey today, which will close at the end of May as well. So for more information, please visit that website that's listed below. Looking forward at your April 22nd workshop, we went over this last meeting, but we have added one item, and that is kind of the kickoff to our 701 South Public Road Pocket Park, introducing that and kind of giving you all an update of where we're at on the development of that parcel that was previously owned by Lura, now owned by the city. And then our kind of annual water supply and project update and our 2025 work plan overview. Looking forward to May 6, we have from tonight, a few ordinances on second readings, several proclamations. And then as CFO and our MCFO, Morgan Walton, mentioned, we'll be having by resolution that fire apparatus contract, arising need to execute that contract. And then our annual youth core program, IGA, and a few ordinances related to our model traffic update, which is sort of a regular update based upon federal law, and then ADU regulations. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Well, then that brings us to council reports to wrap up before our executive sessions. Counselor Freedman?
No report tonight.
Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. The senior advisory board met last week and they were very engaged with understanding the capital project bond initiative. And I am happy to say the senior advisory center has a display of what is being proposed for seniors who come, anyone who visits the senior services center. And the board, through both the city liaison and the chair and me, were advised to really engage in what's being asked here. So we have requested the members senior advisory board to educate themselves as well as possible about what is this question? And so they'll be able to help members of the public understand what's happening. And Director Heisel has offered to provide as much support as possible so that they can understand the question as well and provide input on how this might impact the senior services center and residents who live here. So I was happy to see that they're fully engaged. And I will also mention that the first meeting of the Downtown Development Authority occurred last night just here in this space. And I am happy to say that it went quite well. It opened with a training prior to the actual meeting beginning, since we, all of us, new commissioners, haven't done this before. It is a special district, the DDA. So we were provided with support from our Economic Development Director and current Chair of Lura, Bridget Keating, and our new deputy city attorney, Info. They both trained us quite well. And there are some exceptions to Bob's Rules, which is the watered-down version of Rob's Rules, yes, because Robert's Rules is a handful. And a learning, it was a learning experience for myself and for others on the DDA. And after that training, we did start the meeting right here at, ooh, 6:45, I think we started in this space. We did have public comment on the very first meeting. And that was, as you know, from the Sustainability Resilience Advisory Board, who just made it clear what SRAV is and said that they are there for any support, any guidance, anything that they can help with, the DDA. So it was great to see a mediating game from one of the other city boards relevant to that. And then we opened the meeting. Director Keating ran the meeting because we did not have any officers. So that made perfect sense. So she did run the meeting. We did pass, and of course, can't get all my notes here open, but we did elect a chair and a vice chair. So I'm happy to say that the Director of the Walsin, Joanna.
Oh, Coe, no.
Kagan, Janet Kagan. She is going to be our chair. And Faith Rogers, the owner of Herbal Apothecary, will be the vice chair. And Director Keating will be the executive director, so she will provide all the support for the DDA and all administrative support, keeping the minutes for the meeting as well. And will be able to sign off on projects as we get started, up to a certain amount without our approval and after $25,000. It will come back to the DDA to approve the signatures. And we did sign resolutions in order to recognize the Cora rules, the, I don't remember all of the bits and pieces on my notes here, but we were ready to go, and we recognized the Old Town, Whole Town Tomorrow Plan as our plan. So, that is the guidance that we will be taking moving forward. We are meeting the second Monday every month, and we'll take public comment at some point, but the project, the purpose for these meetings is to recognize what the current situation is with the city, what we see are some of the gaps, but maintaining support for parking lot maintenance, the district ride support through the whole downtown DDA area, small business support, and take up the projects that we're discussing, taking up all the projects that Lura has left to complete. We already have a subcommittee formed to address marketing that needs to be done for, to pick up where that left off from Lura. So, they hit the ground running and they're ready to go. We also develop programs that we think are necessary moving forward. So, DDA is launched and ready to go, and we will be televised as well, so you'll all be able to see that. And I'll be good there.
Well, thank you for, and thank you for serving on that board. So, always appreciate those updates. Mayor Fran Lamont?
Let's see. So, the Dr. COG had its retreat this past weekend. It was really a good meeting. There were some conversations throughout affordable housing, conversations regarding the state demographer, the new state demographer was there. And if you ever have a chance to listen to the state demographer speak, it was quite interesting to understand population growth, population needs, and why we are doing what we're doing in the state. Lots of science.
It's my understanding that Colorado lost population for the first time last year?
It did. But when you look at the decline, it's not as in sharp decline as some other states are losing. So, it's quite an interesting long-term projection, but it talks, but lots of good conversation regarding why we don't have the necessary housing that we do because people are aging in place because they can't get their housing to move down. Really, just an interesting conversation. I think all of us have heard of any kind of regional housing discussion, but it was a good conversation. They also had some conversation regarding potentially looking at how they are going to look to pivot to potentially do some lobbying with state legislators and creating a lobbying committee with Dr. COG to educate regarding home rule issues. So, that kind of came up in conversation. That was a really good conversation, and that's where we're at. Anybody has anything for the Metrovision Awards that's happening in August? So, I don't know if there's anything that we want to kind of nominate that's been done within our community, but certainly those are coming up, and the awards will be the end of August. So, other than that, they're meeting virtually this weekend, and we'll get a legislative update as to where we are. In addition to that, the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Consortium was in DC last week lobbying congressional delegations to try and secure more funding. As with everything coming out of DC right now, it's a little bit up in the air. So, but they are starting to engage our DC delegation. So, those are those two groups. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Tapia Vega?
Just one thing, and it's a reminder, we talked about it last, or last time we were here, but it's just the artist talk this weekend, snow permitting, of course, with Armando Silva. He goes by Artmando because he does art, which I think is one of the funniest and coolest things I've ever heard. Armando Silva, so there's two parts to it, from 11:00 AM to noon, there's going to be a mural celebration on the, what's that, north side of Senor Gomez, where the mural is. And then, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, there's going to be an artist talk with Armando at the Collective Community Arts Center. So, if you have time, you should stop by. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Gallegos?
Yes. The last Friends of the Library book sale raised $6,194. Thank you to everyone who helped donate items or shop the sale. And if you didn't know, that helps fund our summer reading program, Makerspace, Brainfuse, free online tutoring, Little Free Library, and more.
Thank you, councillor Sampson.
I just finished my book that I bought from that sale. I'm ready for the next one. The Historic Preservation Board, Commission, Commission, sorry, big change, discussing establishing a larger sum grant program. They receive fees from the storage tax, and so they can expand that program, they can expand in that area. And they are working with staff on looking at the code section related to demolition of buildings because they do a lot of demo, they look at the demo permits in terms of historic, people come to them and say, we want to demo this part of our historic property, and we want to build on that. So, they're looking at making some suggestions in regard to that. And they will be attending starting June for Art Night Out. So, anybody that's interested in learning more about historic preservation and the grant programs, they can come show there starting in June.
All right. And for me, just a quick update on the Sister City process. I had, the city did receive a letter of interest from Equayitos, Peru, and their mayor. So, their city council actually sat down and reviewed the letter with their mayor. It's just a letter of interest, like, no commitment, anything like that, but they are interested in formalizing a partnership with the City of Lafayette. So, a next step would be for the City of Lafayette to respond. And so, I will be working with staff to write our letter of interest as well, but then, before sending it back to them, we will do a presentation here at council. I will bring in the executive director of the nonprofit, One Voice for Change, Felicity, who will be joining us to go over about what her nonprofit does, how they operate, also how they're funded and supported, because if we do want to do a Sister City program, it has to be with a reliable, sustainable nonprofit organization because they'll be doing a good communication work to maintain that relationship. And so, just answering those questions, and if council approves, you know, I'll send that back to them, and then we can move forward with something, with proclamation, something more formal, but that's down the road. The other city that we were looking into, El Salvador, I'm having, the communication with their mayor has been a lot slower. That's why I haven't heard from them, that they might be interested as well. But right now, we have a really good thing going with a really trustworthy nonprofit with Equayitos in Peru, and so I kind of want to pursue that and not wait, because they're moving, they're excited. The board of directors of the nonprofit is invested in it as well, as well as the executive director. And so, it seems like I want to move forward with at least their proposal, but nothing becomes officialized or formalized without going through of council first. I'm just letting you know that, you know, the initial steps have begun. Any questions on that? Okay. So, updates coming soon. All right. So, with that, we do have two executive sessions, so please, council, stick with me until both motions are passed, and then we can head back. I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to sections 24-4024B of the Colorado Vice Statutes to confer with city attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding quasi-judicial decisions on sketch plan and sketch review procedures under sections 26-16-4 of the Lafayette Code of Ordinances. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. This second, I move to adjourn to executive sessions pursuant to section 24-6-4024B for the Colorado Vice Statutes to confer with city attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding state preemption and the city's whole authority to regulate zoning and land use. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
And I'll pause right now for comments or discussion. Councillor Sampson?
Yes, Mayor. I will be recusing myself from council's vote on this executive session and from the executive session itself to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest with the Lafayette Code of Ethics. A conflict of interest may exist based on an employment relationship that directly relates to a matter under the consideration by the council. Since I am an employee of the State of Colorado and the executive session involves issues of state preemption, I want to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest by refusing myself from the council's consideration of this agenda item and from the executive session itself later this evening.
Thank you. And councillor Tapia Vega?
Mayor, I'm going to refuse myself from the council's vote on this executive session and from the executive session to avoid an actual or apparent conflict of interest. Under the Lafayette Code of Ethics, a conflict of interest may exist based on an employment relationship that directly relates to matter under consideration by the council. Because I'm an employee of the State of Colorado and the executive session involves issues of state preemption, I want to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest by refusing myself from council's discussion of this agenda item and from the executive session on this topic tonight.
Thank you. All right. So, we did have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. And councillor Sampson and councillor Tapia Vega are recusing themselves from this vote, so that passes 5 to 0. And we, the city council, will now adjourn to executive sessions and will not open and not return to an open meeting at this time. The time is now 7:09.